All right, I want to thank everyone for coming to Planning Commission tonight. Commissioner Mitchell is going to leave us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first agenda item tonight is minutes from our meeting on September 7th. So, I would entertain a motion on those.
I move that we accept the minutes from our last meeting.
Second?
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next, item of business is preliminary plat for Escalante Townhomes.
Thank you.
Mr. Snyder.
What we have before you tonight is a request for preliminary plat approval. The zoning is already in place, it has a R3 zoning designation. What I've provided here on the left is kind of a smaller image. That was the Perez Townhomes, back at least five years ago. The main difference is the applicant has been able to acquire a triangular shaped parcel that's along Highway 6 that has now been incorporated into the overall design. And there was an addition of five additional units. Next slide, please. No worries. This is showing the overall preliminary landscaping design for the project. There'll be a few slight changes to it as the applicant works through some red lines with staff. The DRC did a very thorough review of the project, hence some of the very specific conditions. If you have any questions on those, I'd be happy to try and give additional background on those conditions. But as far as the overall project, they're looking at a master plan development that's just over nine units to the acre. Currently, we're at 42% open space, so quite a bit of open space, which would be nice amenity for the residents. Any questions for staff at this time?
Where's the trail located here?
Trail is located right here.
Okay, so it's entirely off the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there going to be any improvements, is it going to be, is there any, are we requiring a fence where they're along it?
If you look at condition number five, the city would like a wood two-rail fence with a mow strip. And so, the city has had numerous discussions about what kind of fence would be appropriate as far as delineation, safety, visibility. Ultimately, they decided on something significantly open, but at least providing a divider line.
Will you put lighting there at all?
You most likely have exterior lighting on the units. I don't know that there's any light standards proposed.
No, we haven't planned on putting lighting on the trail.
And then we do have some elevations, but I'll let the applicant kind of walk you through.
I have a question that I didn't see.
Okay.
On the plans. This area, especially right in here, has been very wet. There's springs that come out there, especially in wet years, the last couple of years probably not much, but a home that's right along in here has had a lot of trouble with water in the basement and stuff like that. Is there any special things that are being done to address that water issue that's along there?
There are. Mike, if you don't mind, in Board docs, we've got the plans attached. And then, the applicant's here, maybe he can walk you through kind of the collection, the drainage system?
I did see a collection box, I didn't see the size. The print wasn't very good when I was looking at it.
Come up here a little bit.
I think, is this where that?
So, you've got, feel free to jump in and interrupt at any time. A couple of land drain systems that will be put in, collection boxes, and then you've got a ditch system over here and a ditch system over here. The main idea is to collect anything from the spring and send it out to the storm drain system here.
Correct. Where a lot of the water is or where you can see the cattails is kind of where that round the valley is?
Let's have you come up to the mic.
Okay.
State your name.
Sure. So, a lot of where we're seeing the water.
State your name real quick.
Oh, my name's Sid Alsop, I'm the applicant. Here. And, we want to have it drained, as you said. We, A, we want to keep it away from any sort of units, but B, the drainage, just bring it out so then it can get into the city system and then wherever that terminates or dumps, be there. But additionally, we've had, what do you want to call it? We had our soils engineer come out, they did samples here, 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 and then off-plan out there. Here, where we're seeing the highest level of water is at three and a half to four feet. So, we know that something is, there's a little bit of water under there, but it's not enough that we can't build on it. So again, with the land drains, we should get it covered. Additionally, we had a wetland consultant come out, check it out and understand, or at least their, what do you want to call it, their findings was that it was actually irrigation that's leaking onto the property. And, so we're going to make sure that that's fully understood what we're doing. But again, we're trying to make sure that we count for it, just in case it's not.
So, is there a field drain system that is picking up water along the perimeter, or is it through the?
Yeah, so we've got drains on the perimeter here, through the community.
Are those drains, are they sub-drains or are they ditches on the surface?
They'll be underground.
Okay.
Yeah, we won't have open ditches there, there.
Are these, is this Note 11?
Detail 11 is three wide ditch per sheet, so there, but not through here.
So, we have an open ditch?
This is the existing ditch, right here.
Yeah, the existing one here that you're calling out, then this is a new one?
Yeah. But through the community, no, we won't have open ditches.
Is that three-foot ditch the one that they suggested that you meander a bit rather than go straight?
Yes.
Okay. Just for aesthetic purposes. So, what's the capacity of your sump well and other structures? I mean, how much water can you move through?
I have no idea what my engineer calculated to do that. That's a good question, I can find out for you, but I have not calculated how much, we left it up to him.
Am I seeing this right then, that there's a four-inch foundation drain here and the outlet here, but they're only four inches, right?
It's correct, per plan. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
You know, it would take a soils engineer to go in and do that calculation and to go through and determine how much water's there. I'm a little bit familiar with the property and I know that there have been times, there's been enough water that it comes out onto the sidewalk and down the ditch. And then again, where it's moving over here on this lot too, that, you know, that's concerning. Not bells, but the next one here. And so, that whole side, and there is a spring that's actually underneath Highway 6. It's a city spring. And so, this whole area is a wet spot. It's wet along the railroad tracks above you, so. That would be my only concern about, I like the way it's laid out and stuff like that, I think it's a good use of the ground. Just want to make sure that there's no problems after these are built.
Sure.
That there's some kind of movement or problems. I did not see that these units have a basement. They're all slab-on grade, is that right?
Yeah, we're not planning to do basements out here.
No, have a four, located below grade.
Yeah. So, with the groundwater being at three and a half feet, knowing that we have to have three feet of space in between the bottom and any groundwater, there's no room for it unless we lift the site, which wouldn't make a ton of sense.
Did you want to walk us through, I think, elevations, is that what you had said?
I have to go back to the presentation slides.
So, this is, you know, these are the front-loaded units, sorry, the reloaded units, and this is the front doors of them. We wanted to keep it, you know, kind of a farmhouse traditional, like what a lot is out here in Fish Fork, but we actually wanted to make it look a little bit different as well, so we stand out. And it's just kind of a better-looking community. There's reasons for that. One, better-looking product sells better, and in this economy, I want to make sure everything sells. That's a big part of it. But, all there is, is, you know, we want to have three to four bedrooms per unit, two and two and a half baths. On the first floor, be a little room and a powder bath, and then the main room will have kitchen, great room.
Go back to that mic for a minute. So, you have stone, stucco, and hardy?
Yes. So, here we go. So, ground level, bath, room, then again dining room, great room, kitchen, and then three bedrooms on top. And we can switch it around, there's enough space on them to allow for a fourth bedroom if you wanted to do it there.
How tall are the buildings?
They'll fit under, I want to say they're 34 feet, I think code is max at 36.
So, we're right out of?
So, we're just under it. But we try to make it to where you could actually have a family in there. Now, there's other plans that are around Utah County that have a similar layout. And, this feels really good, feels really big, and with, you know, three bedrooms up top, you've got more than enough for a couple of kids. And, with the third, if you have like a friend, grandparents, something, someone can come in at grade and stay in that room.
How many parking spots were in the, per unit?
Um, two for the garage, but I don't remember what it is. So, there's one, two, three right there, six, nine.
The public, the civil plans, the DRC hit on that quite a bit. What's nice about the design is you've got a two-car garage within immediately in front of each unit. You've got two spaces that are out of the travel area.
Yeah, so, I wasn't at the DRC.
So, here's the parking data table.
Oh, there you go, 92. Car's 35.
Could you go back to the floor plans real quick? Have you given any thought to the possibility of having a half-bath on this main floor here?
We did, and the reason why we're shying against it, because if you put it up there, it makes a weird pop-out, like there, or there, or there, or there. And that's it, aesthetically, it looks kind of funny, and then everyone knows what you're doing.
It's absolutely true, but I have a couple of family members that live in, in units that are very similar to this. And it's kind of, it's kind of, if you've just got people visiting, you know, they either have to go upstairs into a private bathroom or back down. I would call this kind of a mudroom unless that becomes a bedroom, but, you know, that's the... So, you're either up or downstairs.
Yeah.
You know, I just wondered if you, you know, I'm waiting for somebody to say, "And there is an optional half-bath that can be put somewhere." I don't know where that would go right there.
We toyed with the idea of having another room, like an office and a bath, but then it made the area feel a lot smaller. And so, we want when people go in, to feel big, not like you're in a typical townhome, but you're in something that feels spacious.
No doubt.
Because when you get upstairs.
But you'd only need enough room for a toilet and a sink, which is three feet wide by about seven foot long.
That's, that'd be really convenient, John, but we got, I mean, this three bedrooms, three full baths.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's...
Yeah, it, I like that, I like that a lot. And I don't know that anybody really cares about a half-bath on there. I've always just wondered, well, why isn't that offered, is it?
If you're a buyer, we can, we might be able to figure something out.
Yeah.
So, sorry to keep coming back to parking. If we go back to slide, Mike, if I count, there's only nine visitors' parking spots. Is that correct? Yeah.
What is it?
Oh, there's 12, I missed three.
Nine.
You're mine? I missed the one by number six. And then you were saying that there's enough room, so how many feet are in front of each building? Because there's that little, I guess it's a wall in between each unit?
Oh, right there?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to be a planner, just kind of doing it.
How long is that, from the garage to the end of that?
Can you bring up the, on the plat, it should show a typical lot, and that'll show the depth on it. Scroll up. Maybe it's down. There should be, Scott should have put a typical lot layout on it. Yeah, it should be even, it might even be on the next sheet. I want to say it was, well, it was supposed to be 16.
There's a note pointing to it on the other ones, they call it out on the notes.
U dot, no, that's power. I don't know where the lot typical was, but I can, I want to say it's supposed to be 20, just because I thought that was what the city standard was.
One more sheet.
One more sheet, please. What's that, that note's referring to?
10, 16.
That's the land drain?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Foundation, 12.
Scroll down, Mike, yeah, if you look at Lot 6 next to the parking stalls, that's a good indicator.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, yeah.
So, we could get two cars in front of each of those houses?
Yeah.
The parking count at 92, it has four per unit.
So, two in the garage and then two in front?
I have a question, on this.
Yeah.
This rentable trailer parking. I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
Well, how's this going to be managed by the HOA?
So, the HOA obviously will take care of the landscape maintenance. The streets are supposed to be city streets.
Keep it clear, because it's pretty secluded, so it's not like you drive by Fourth North and go, "Hey, there's a trailer."
What, we left it open because, at one point, we discussed the option of putting out like some sort of city trellis there. The only way for us to have that, the turnaround was to have to make the bulb that big. If...
The red curb, is it going to be?
We can make it red curb, because then it keeps everyone off of it. But again, the idea was, if you did want to come in when we first designed it to put some sort of trailhead, like somewhere over there, then you could put in some sort of parking.
Might be tempting for Unit 20 to...
Oh yeah, Unit 20's got great parking. So, there you go, we can say, "Unit 20, give you a fourth bathroom."
People park in cul-de-sacs all the time, right? If we had houses around there, they'd park in front, it's more the long terminal.
No, I understand, and I certainly don't want people, because it happens. People park their trailer, they'll park their boat there for what they say is a weekend, and then it sits there for two weeks. They'll come in in an RV, visit family, and I totally understand. As far as how to enforce it, you could red curb it, and if it's a city street, you know, someone's going to have to call police and have them take care of it.
I don't know, I'm trying to remember, like, I don't know that this one was proposed as a city street.
We went to, thought they were city with standards because of this right here. We went to city standard.
No, it's for fire.
Oh, it's for fire, that's right, because we had to pull out the bulb there. Oops, it's coming here, it's probably utility use.
I don't see any street dedication in the plat. And acreage is in roads and zeros.
And then that makes it easy. Yeah, we'll tell anyone that parks their stuff there. There you go.
That's what you were looking for, right?
Yeah. It'll be HOA managed, and HOA likes to impound vehicles.
It's more secluded, it's more likely people are to be like, "Oh, I want to go park my stuff there for a weekend or whatever."
Yeah.
If a fire emergency vehicle needs to flip around, then that big circle we made to put in, something gets lots smaller.
Well, Tom?
Any other questions? Perfect, thank you.
No?
Any discussions on this? I think I resonate with what John said, I like the design, it makes good use of that land. Making sure that we use that, the land that's there for usable features. I would entertain a motion on it.
I move that the proposed preliminary plat be recommended for approval based on staff's findings and the conditions listed.
Okay. Motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes. All right, quickest meeting, just kidding.
It's all...
It's because Dave wasn't here, we were going to get out of here before 6:30.
Well, I will, you call the show, so as much time or as little time as you'd like to spend on these items, we appreciate you taking the time.
As Jesse wants to spend on it, or as I want to spend on it?
We'll let you guys play.
Okay.
Rock, paper, scissors to pick that out?
We've got three concepts for you to look at as part of our discussion agenda listing. Feel free to provide any general feedback, all three are looking to move forward, and so if there's constructive criticism or changes that you'd like to see or questions, let's go ahead and talk about it now so that, that way they can go back to the drawing board if needed, or make changes as recommended. I'd be happy to kind of hit the highlights, or if you'd like the applicants to come up and lead off and kind of present whatever you would like.
I'd like to hear from the staff, just briefly, I mean, give your summary and then we can turn it over then.
This one, Mike?
Exactly.
We'll just take them one at a time, if that's all right?
That works.
So, the first one is an infill project. I know a few infill projects are done a year. We have about two, maybe three a year. This one is on Second West, just north of 100 North. Just north by a couple lots from a duplex and single-family detached home infill project that was done a couple years ago. We've driven by, I don't know how many were present on the field trip a couple years ago when we went and looked at the finished product, after the older home that was there was torn down and replaced with this. The property we're looking at tonight is the Voorhees property. There's an existing duplex here, two-story, was built about 20 years ago to replace an older home. What the applicant's looking for is feedback on a proposal to add a second duplex to the rear of the property. If we can go ahead and jump down the slide, Mike. So, this is showing the existing duplex. The property already is in the R3 zone, so in order to accommodate the duplex, the applicant would need to come before you for a zone change to apply the infill overlay. The infill has quite a few purpose and intent statements in it, as well as a lot of latitude. And so, things that we'll look at in just a second, such as setbacks, fencing, those things are under the purview of the Planning Commission and the City Council to decide, excuse me. One thing of topic that we can come back on in a little bit is materials. So, here we've got the existing home here, two-story vinyl siding, brick wainscot there on the front, you can see. Let's go ahead and jump to the next slide. This is a rendering that was provided by the applicant, gives a great overview of the property. Kind of shows the uniform fencing, where it's four units or less. The code does say that as far as uniform fencing, you can waive a masonry requirement, masonry wall requirement, excuse me. Or, if you feel it's necessary as far as privacy or other concerns, that can be left in. So, you can see the arrangement and layout, you'd have a few additional parking spaces added here. Each unit would have a single-car garage, very similar look and feel to the existing duplex. Let's go to the next slide, Mike. This kind of shows a good layout of the proposed setbacks. It's a deep lot, 210 feet, narrow lot, and so hence the request for the infill, infill, excuse me, I can't speak tonight. So, they lack the frontage to do like a traditional subdivision lot. The infill does allow for projects of this configuration and these types of housing. 10 feet on the rear, our standard is 25. As you just saw the image of the one to the south, I think they went with like a five or a seven foot setback on the rear. Biggest difference is the two-story. What's nice though is the second story has limited windows on the back, and if we look at the air photo, a lot of deep lots around it, and so, that's something you could take into consideration when granting the 10 feet. Let's go to the next slide, Mike. This kind of shows a little more detail of the units. This is the back, these windows are in the bathroom, so most likely be glazed or rarely used. This would be facing the street. Sides have little patio sliding doors that would step out. Let's go to the next slide, Mike. This is the floor plans. Single-car garage, living on the, on the main floor. We'll be happy to see there is a half-bath.
Now, we're talking.
And then we've got three bedrooms, two bathrooms upstairs, with laundry facilities up there as well. I think this might be the last slide, let's see. Yep, so let's go ahead and, let's go back up to the 3D rendering. And so, as you've reviewed these in the past, I don't need to spend too much time discussing the materials, but we've kind of looked at projects that will enhance or improve the neighborhood. And so, we have had some discussions with the applicant as far as possibly even improving the materials on the existing duplex and bringing the rear duplex up to a higher quality product such as maybe a Hardyboard siding instead of a vinyl siding. But, we'll invite the applicant up, and if there's any questions for staff, I'd be happy to try and answer them. Otherwise, any feedback, we'd love to hear.
Thank you. Mike, in, in just keeping consistent with time, if you'll set like a 15-minute timer, just so that we, on one of these discussions, we don't spend a ton of time, then one, we don't give any time, just kind of keep things as even as possible, so.
On the street, so you're aware or...
Yes, yeah. Yeah, just put a 15-minute up there. Come on up.
All right, yeah, Tyler Voorhees, that was a good overview, thank you. So, I know we had some discussion, like you mentioned, about the exterior of the home. I was basing it off of the, I think it was Section E of the code? Oh no, it was Section C number one, where it mentions, you know, the design shall incorporate, you know, the similar designs to the structures around the neighborhood. And so, I surveyed the neighborhood, you know, 23 of the homes, out of the 50 homes, I did, just, you know, the homes surrounding that block. 23 were brick, 10 were vinyl, seven were vinyl and brick. We had seven stucco, two brick and stucco, and one was stucco and siding. And so, that's what we decided, you know, the brick and vinyl would be a good option to continue with. One, the existing home is in good condition still, and it matches the other, the other homes in the area for the, for what the infill overlay was requiring, as far as that part goes. But yeah, any other questions, they've got to be happy to go over.
Any questions for the applicant?
Are you, are you opposed to, I mean, it sounds like you've done some research, you don't want to change your material selection for the exterior, but I, my understanding and what we've done with other applicants is kind of required, I don't know if upgrade is the correct word for it, but certain materials finishing on, yeah.
Oh, you mean like...
Is that, is that a deal killer for you on that?
To change like the whole exterior of the home?
Both the existing and the new one?
And the new one? Yeah, I mean, not completely, I'd prefer not to, just because, well, one, like I mentioned, I was just going with...
It's in good shape, and it's...
It's in good shape, and I was going with, you want to know what the infill overlay requirements were saying in the code. But yeah, I would just, you know, would obviously save a lot of money too, to be able to keep that one. And where it matches the other homes, I wouldn't want it to look too different than, you know, the home north and south of me are both vinyl, and then across the street from me, I have two multiplexes that are all brick. And so, kind of, and then there's one on the corner close by that's brick and vinyl. So, it just kind of matches the neighboring homes that are there currently. I think it would just look better as well.
And what we looked at a few years ago, it's stucco and stone?
I believe it has some Hardyboard as well.
Does it? Okay.
We can, we can pull the string.
The one just two over, in this one?
Yeah, just two, so, yeah.
I think one of the good things we're trying to do when the infill overlay is used, is that, I guess upgrade isn't quite the word to use, but I'm going to use it. You know, you can do the same thing all the time, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's the right thing. And if the industry was all vinyl, that's what they would be doing. And, you know, for the most part now, people have upgraded to the Hardyboard. And, you know, for the most part now, uh, people have upgraded to the hardy board. And, uh, I don't know about the existing home that's there and in use already, are you living there, is that the home that you live in?
The one just above, yeah, on the.
Yeah, that one?
Yep.
Okay, you know, I'm, I don't know that, uh, I don't know about requiring it there, but, uh, if anything you would do that is above, above vinyl is going to, is going to make that neighborhood a little nicer.
Yeah.
And so, what we've done, when we've utilized the infill overlay, for a lot of places, uh, we approved a, a fourplex that has two fourplexes, uh, on the property, and they're going through and putting one in the back. And, uh, we actually required him to redo the two that are on both sides, to match the one that's in the back.
Okay.
And here, I'm, I'm ready for these kinds of projects on these deep, deep lots, because they become, I, I can see that you cleaned it up and stuff. They become a real problem for the city, because they're inaccessible and stuff like that, so, I, I like the project, and I, I like your design, but, uh, you know, my suggestion would be to, uh, upgrade at least the one that you're doing now, the hardy board.
At least the new one?
That's how I feel.
Okay.
Now, uh, you know, uh, you know, with with the units that are right across the street from you that are all brick, they've weathered the storm pretty good, you know, they're forty years, forty-plus years old.
Yeah.
And, you know, they're, they're holding up well. Uh, vinyl, you know, there's a reason that it's not used a lot.
Right.
So, anyway, that's, that's just my opinion.
Okay. All the time you just give opinions, and that's what you wanted tonight, that's why you're coming in this format for us, and
Yeah.
John's echoing my opinions, right, I, I like the project, I think that your, uh, site plan looks great, I, I like projects like this. My sticking point would be your exterior elevation, if you clean that up, I don't, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't, unless something else came to light, I wouldn't have much of a concern with it.
Would you be opposed to, like you suggested, you know, the new home being in the, the upgraded?
I would prefer both of them, that, but I, I mean, I mean, we'd have to see when it come before, so what that was like, I, I thinking back, the one that John mentioned where we had, I think actually we had garages to that also. Um, that was one that was in my mind, where if we wanted to have that whole look, um, updated, and yeah, that's, it doesn't show anymore, so I've been updating. But, uh, I, it would, it'd get past my scrutiny quicker with, with both of them being done.
I would like to see them both, as well, I'm, yeah, I, I have another question concerning, uh, you're asking for, uh, less space on the back and on the sides for this second unit as well, maybe we can go to that site plan again?
Seven and ten?
And I think that's okay, uh, if the space between the existing duplex and the new duplex remains grass over there somewhere for this, for the new duplex to recreate or go out and, you know, barbecue a steak or something, you know? They've got somewhere to go, this is a nice big space, I like it.
All that green, all the green right there is gonna be grass.
Is it going to be grass?
And then there's two circles, they're kinda hard to see, but if we zoom in, yeah, those are two, two new trees that would be planted as well.
Okay.
And on that front strip, the front strip, there's nothing there currently, and so I'm just suggesting to, you know, put two that are, according to what was on the list.
I noticed that you've got a big tree out there now, right there.
Yeah, so that's, that tree would be replaced, you know, be removed for those two parking spots that are proposed, so. So I'd be removing one tree by adding four, that idea.
Is that a tree over here?
It's, it's kinda right in the middle where those two cars are, so if you, yeah.
But the big one?
What about the big?
Oh, the big one, that one's not there anymore. That one's gone.
Well, that would be my suggestion, uh, when you come back to us, you know, I think, uh, we'd look very favorably on it if we were to go hardy board on both structures, and, you know, anything else we would consider, of course, uh, that would be, that would be our, or at least it's my, uh, my preference right now.
Shaw, anything to add to that?
No, I agree, I'm, I'm the newest planning commissioner, but when I first learned of, um, infills with the planning commission, um, they talked a lot about improvements, improving the neighborhood, you know, not just building the additional unit, but improving the existing unit too, and, and I agree with what's been said.
And I would echo that same thing, uh, I think John hit the nail on the head, is when we look at these over, are these overfill?
Infill overlays, I got you.
Infill, thank you. Infill overlays. But we, uh, we look at, how does it improve the neighborhood, right, how does it make it better, 'cause adding to the existing, you know, you're getting another two homes on the property that you can rent or do whatever you're going to do with them. Um, and so it's, how can we make the city or that part of the city a little bit better at the same time, and I think that's the, you know, the trade-off of, of giving that extra housing or that extra, uh, zoning, so to speak, so, I would echo the hardy board, I would do it for both, because I think that, one, it's gonna match that way, and they're gonna, they're going to match each other, and it's gonna also help that, that neighborhood, you know, as someone else comes in with a, with the same ti, similar type of project, they're gonna hopefully do the same type of thing.
Gotcha.
And maintenance will be much better on those, you know, anybody that's had vinyl knows that, you're gonna have some maintenance, you're gonna have some broken uh, pieces and stuff, at least if you've got active kids that like to throw baseballs.
Right.
Anyway, there you go.
Brendan?
Is that the, that's the proposed uniform?
Oh.
Is there?
Uh, yeah, vinyl was.
Comfort with that?
I don't have a problem with that, at all.
What's, is there an existing fence there?
Yeah, currently on the north side, there's a short, like, three-foot chain link.
Mm-hmm.
You can kinda see it in that one, and then in the back, it's got like railroad ties with some boards on it, and then on the south side, it's just got some wood kinda sticks with barbed wire.
So custom, it's all custom?
Yeah, it's all custom, all the way around, I got three types, so.
Deep blocks and Spanish floor.
And so I was gonna just remove all three of those, and then just put the vinyl across.
Just a six-foot vinyl?
Uh-huh, except for the, the, towards the front, do three.
Urban wild land.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, and that fence, that gate's not even, anyways, it's.
But you know, i- i- if you, if, if you upgrade your property like that, you know, if things are asked for by the neighbors east, or north and south, that's a very good, uh, you know, that's, that's a good note for them, that if you decide to do something similar
Yeah.
with your deep lot, you know, this is what you'd be looking at.
Yeah, I've talked to both.
That's gonna be a nice area.
Yeah, I've talked to both neighbors, north and south, not, not the one to the west, but.
Because even through the block on Third West, those homes are very nice, and the, and those fourplexes and stuff are very nice.
Right.
So I think that this would fit in with that as well, as what's on Second West.
Gotcha.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions for us?
Uh, no, I think that was it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Another one?
Yes.
Let's do it.
We need to reset the timer.
Reset after, yeah, we'll reset after you, Doug, 'cause we don't know.
As much as you like. Well, you do, if Dave was here, would say no, but you, you do give as much time as you want.
All right, next project, different part of town.
Dave knows that, too.
Yes, please.
This has been looked at with the planning commission before, uh, northeast of the hospital, so this light blue. Um, this is the IHC, Greenwich Ford Hospital, we're looking at this piece here. Um, if we jump to the next slide, you're gonna see a larger project that kinda just shows, to me, it's important because it shows that this project isn't gonna be isolated or standalone, be out there by itself. Um, this, oh, this is a separate project that we're not gonna dive into tonight, um, but it will probably make its way to you for some opinions and feedback in the future.
Is it the same applicant, that, it's not?
Um, there's some connections.
There is connection, okay.
So, Elevate Development, we, we own the alliances coming in on this first piece here, this delivered now, and then the larger master plan will be meeting next week, and the the bigger meeting on the eleventh, on the larger master plan, this is, this is separate, this is
Okay.
under current zoning and current standards, does it need any?
Well, it does need a zone change.
It does need a zone change, but it comes without the plot approval, but not the statement.
Well, let's go next slide, please. Um, so this is showing the phasing, um, it'd be broken into two phases, um, this would be two buildings, one here and one here, let's go to the next slide. Uh, this would be the second phase, um, but we'll let the applicant kinda speak to, it's unclear, I know that they're going through as far as determining what remainder of the property, the outline kinda comes like this, um, is buildable. Um, looking at some wetland and delineation right now, um, that's important because it'll tie into ultimately how the density is calculated.
It's been delineated already?
Do we have a final number?
Uh-huh, yeah, we got thirty-one usable acres.
I think the overall is thirty-one. Every, all of it's usable?
Uh, the overall's thirty-seven.
Okay.
So, yeah, we have thirty-one usable.
We'll have to look at our notes a little better. Um, so first thing to talk about is the density, if we go to the next slide. Uh, actually, this doesn't have the overall density, there was a previous slide, um, nope, it's not in here.
So the reason they, the reason they took it out is that it didn't count the whole piece, we're using, if you guys remember from our prior meeting, we're kind of condensing that density towards the front, potentially use TDRs on the back, and so, we're using the entire piece for the density count.
One second.
Okay.
If you catch you on the audio, we need to have you come out.
Okay, sorry.
One second, and that, and that's important, because, um, and I could be incorrect, but I thought, I'm looking at the parcels, there was two, this, a third one up here that's included as well?
Yeah, we've done two boundary line adjustments as well, handle on the other side, and then.
So ultimately, what we'll need for the planning commission, um, is a good handle on what's the proposed density, 'cause currently the R-four caps are at twenty units to the acre. Uh, in the past, there's been the discussion of potentially using TDRs to increase that number, um, that's another topic that I believe is gonna be touched on with the city council next week in the joint planning commission city council meeting. Um, so currently, the cap would be at twenty. Um, ultimately, when we consider density for the, the property, we're gonna consider all the phases, and so each phase would need to either be able to stand alone or comply with the city code. Um, so d- density's something that we'll let, uh, the applicant kinda speak to and give you an update as far as, uh, of future phases. Um, another request, if we go back to the presentation.
Those three I just did, so this one, and this one, and this one, are thirty-two.
So.
There's one to the north, then one to the south. You have these slivers? Yeah.
That whole thing.
So you probably cleaned up the property lines and picked up the gap.
Oh, yeah, just the three that are registered, should be my click here, is that, is that you guys two?
Yeah.
No, it's a different name.
Let's keep you on your toes.
Doing that, that really seems quiet.
Twenty-seven hundred north is, is RNT, and then that RG is the ten-three, what it would be.
So, yeah, though, that one is thirty-five, one thirty, so now it's this one, this one, and this one, and that's, this.
How much was it, you said?
Thirty-five, go one more back here.
I, I don't think we need to go too far into the weeds on this, but ultimately, when it comes before you for approval, the idea would be we'd have a very nice subdivision table that says, here's the total acreage, here's developable acreage, here's the density, um, here's the total number of units, if we go back to the presentation real fast, and I think I'm out of time, um, next slide. Next slide. Uh, se- second thing for your consideration and feedback tonight is, uh, way back in March, we had a presentation from our intern, Jackson Billy, uh, where he had done a lot of plant, or parking research, excuse me. Um, currently, we sit at two-point-five, and we have a requirement for garages and guest spaces tied into that. Um, current proposal would be about one-point-six-six, um, so that's something that, uh, planning commission has not uh, had back before them for the opportunity to make a recommendation, so any direction or feedback you feel comfortable giving, uh, as far as the reduction from two-point-five down to, uh, sub-two. Um, third thing, which isn't, uh, it's shown here, currently, the R-four requires sixty percent garages. Applicants looking at something less than that, once again, and thoughts or direct feedback would be helpful. Um, we do have some elevations, I don't have a lot of details, um, this is an existing project in Colorado, if I remember correct.
Right, Littleton in Colorado, I believe. Correct.
Um, that was done by Alliance as well. Oh. Where are you at right now? Oh, did you, this is the older, I sent the newer one on Gmail, keep going down, this one will work, just keep going down, keep going down. These are the elevations, uh, Broadstone, um, this is the project, very nice, lovely. Keep scrolling down, Mike. Show some interior shots, amenities, gathering spaces, things of that sort, keep going down. Some of the outdoor amenities. Back to the indoors. I think that might be, I think that's the last of it, oh, one more. So this is just a little bit about the company, I'd be more than happy to let the applicant kinda share their, uh, company information. Um, so once again, just kind of any feedback as far as use of TDRs, how that might impact density, thoughts on parking, garage percentages, and I've got a tally here if you forget any of them.
What was the, the square footage requirement, that was in yellow on that other sheet too, if they were under the?
That is a slight proposed change, so currently, if you look at the code, um, a single-bedroom unit has to have eight-hundred square feet minimum. We do count, uh, s- a portion of balconies to that, um, two-bedroom is ten-eighty, and the average of all unit sizes combined is a minimum of nine-sixty. The applicant's looking to go to seven-thirty from eight-hundred on a one-bedroom, uh, drop to a thousand from ten-eighty on a two-bedroom, and nine-twenty on the average. What I don't have, uh, for you is, uh, kinda floor plan layout showing how that space might function or is used. Um, but we'll let the applicant speak to that as well.
Okay. All right. We'll bring the applicant up, we'll reset the timer, just like we've done last, and applicants, if you'd like to come up and speak to us, or anything you'd like to say?
Could we, I'll, I'll talk about the density, 'cause we had this discussion with us, not with Alliance, this was pre-Alliance, so, when we discussed.
State your name real quick.
Austin Pritchett, from Elevate Development. So, if you guys remember, when we discussed condensing that density to the front, the back would remain open, and potentially be extra parking, so if these parking requirements are not met well enough, we have all of that space on the back, they're taking the entire density, so if we need to do another chunk of parking until TDRs come through and we figure something else out, that's, that's absolutely on the table. So this is designed with the thought that potentially TDR program would come in, and we could make use of this backside a little better.
In what zoning were you guys proposing?
This is R-four, so it's only nineteen units an acre, per usable acre. So, um, their engineer on the one page that we took out, but it still made it in here, um, had it higher than that, 'cause he's only using the acreage that the site actually sits on, but we're using the entire site. So it's nineteen units an acre, so it falls under the R-four zoning, it's just condensed to the front.
Austin, where's, where is the, is this the wetlands area?
Yep.
Just the, the green?
Yep.
Right, okay.
Yep.
And back here.
Yeah, on the back half there, that's correct.
So if you were to go, uh, further to the northeast there, and follow that land that you got, would you propose for more units as well?
Yeah, so I think the thought was, we want them to be as efficient as possible to leave the backside open for future use, and if that means putting a parking lot there to hit that two per unit, we can do that, and then on the future use, we could potentially renegotiate, right? They have data from all across the nation, these suburban areas, that say, uh, one car per bed is typically, works very well, and so, he can talk to that a little better than I can, but, um.
But you could add some parking here, and then add this for future?
Exactly, I think that's, that's totally open, they, they did it the most efficient they could, and brought it in, and we said, we'll use whatever extra land we need for now to make it work, 'cause the density works, nineteen units an acre, the parking's a little low, but we can make that work as well, and then, you know, if that program comes along, we, we renegotiate down the line, and so, that's really what I'd like you to look at, is the quality that Alliance does, and, uh, the flexibility we have on that, and make your suggestions, I'll let him talk to the company, and but you can see on the renderings how phenomenal their product is, so.
Are you proposing to, uh, have most of those amenities, or some of them, or not very many of those that are shown in the presentation?
I'll let Ryan speak to that.
I mean, that's, that's pretty nice.
Yeah, so what, um, Ryan Barker, Alliance Residential, um, you know, what you saw up there is a, it is one of many, many projects that, that, um, that we've done, it's, it's a suburban project that we felt was somewhat similar, um, and so. And so with the space that we have, you know, we certainly want to include as many amenities as we possibly can. That's, you know, in suburban locations, what we see helps us, you know, attract people and lease up is to have really good amenities. And so, you know, the outdoor fire pits, you know, those types of amenities that you see is certainly things that we would, we would like to implement.
Nice pool?
Absolutely.
Is that something you...
Yeah, yeah, pool's a very important feature, hot tub, you know, you know, things for kids, I think, especially in this location as well.
Look like some stuff inside as well, common areas.
Yeah. Yeah, large common areas, and every, you know, every location is unique. So the Alliance, a lot of people know the Alliance name from property management. We are primarily now developers. Our Alliance office, which I'm the managing director of, we've been open just about a year and a half here in Utah. I'm a Utah county guy, this is where I've grown up, this is where I've developed. But under the Alliance flag, you know, this will be one of our first projects out of the ground. We also have projects in Woods Cross and South Salt Lake. But this will be the first one out of the ground, and really important to, you know, to the company as far as our flagship project. As far as, I guess, you know, as we work to come back and put our best foot forward on our site plan, you know, as it was represented, you know, I think we would, I don't know if we'd be under a variance as far as the parking goes and garages go. Thoughts and feedback as far as we approach that, how we approach that, and what you would suggest or look for?
No, go ahead. I had some questions on why we're under your square footage, or I share feelings on them.
Sure.
Is there a reason? Can you walk through? Are you seeing, is that what you're seeing in your marketing? Is your other places that that's the square footage that sells best? What is, what's the reasoning for, you're consistently under what our minimum requirements are?
Yeah, I would say, you know, one of the things as far as Alliance goes, we, you know, we have a few architects that we use, and right now, our pipeline has thirty-five thousand units in it. And the thing that we've gotten really good at, or I guess our architects have, is just efficiency as they've worked through, you know, hundreds and thousands of floor plans. And our goal is always to provide the nicest, cleanest floor plan that we can with square footage that's optimal, but at the end of the day is not overused. And where we go with that is, you know, gross rents at the end of the day add up for people. And so our floor plans have been refined, you know, over the years and projects to maximize efficiency in a way, you know, that provides the most value without too much excessive, and it's not excessive, but, you know, overused square footage that then ties up to a larger gross rent. So that's really our goal, is optimal floor plans, you know, in a way that also provides a nice gross rent for people.
And this is going to be a leased or rented facility?
Yep. Go ahead, Todd.
I'm going to ask you one question about the parking. And you made a comment, and we've heard it before, that one parking place per bed has worked quite well. If you're from this area, I don't know too many one-bedroom apartments that have only one person in it. If there's more than one, it usually means that there's two people, and they're both working and they're both driving a car. So how do we justify or rectify that issue? I'm just looking at the sheer numbers of what I see around me.
Yeah.
You know, my neighbors that are empty nesters, and I happen to be one. You know, I don't have one car.
Sure.
I only sleep in one bed, but I got more than one vehicle.
You bet. I would say, I would, you know, to answer that, and every, and I don't know if you guys can go back to our site plan, but, you know, at this, you know, density of, call it twenty units an acre, roughly where we're at, you know, across the country, our suburban product, and, you know, it ties back to, you know, with all of our internal studies, and really, at the end of the day, what really drives it is just the market. And the one thing that we can never afford to be is to be underparked. Because we lose people if we're underparked. And so we also don't want to be overparked and have big, open parking fields. We'd rather use that as amenities. But just, I guess, speaking to our national averages for this type of density, you know, it all ties back to, you know, one space per bedroom. That works, you know, very well when you consider the twos and the threes that are also in there. And that's suburban product, you know, that I would say is, you know, very similar to Spanish Fork. I guess that's my best answer. Yeah.
But singles, I just don't buy that. I mean, I like to recreate Park City a little bit, and setting some nice facilities up there. And they have a parking restriction at all of those for one vehicle. But a lot of the areas that you go to, there are more than one bedroom in those facilities, and so you have to park off property. And sometimes it's close, sometimes it's not. And that's very inconvenient. And I'm just looking at our area, and the households we've all belonged to as we've grown up here.
Sure.
And I look at that one, I'm thinking that if it's a one-bedroom, or a one-bed, however you want to look at that, it will likely mean that there are two persons in there. And it's not very likely that one is going to be a young person that can't drive yet. So in Utah, when they get to be sixteen, they get their driver's license, and we like to give them a car. Where's that car going?
I was just saying, I comment to...
Absolutely, sure.
You go up one slide, Michael? So this master plan, or two slides, sorry. There's going to be a new track stop coming in.
Yes.
We're trying to get it close to this area. It's probably going to be behind DI in Springville. We're working with UDOT right now to bus rapid transit all through this area, including stopping in Alliance.
Yeah, that's hopeful.
And that takes people right to the track stop. That's a lot of singles who can go to work. That's a lot of one-car people that can go to work. It's a totally different demographic than your regular Spanish Fork person.
But that's a long way out, that BRT and tracks. I mean, we're talking decades, honestly, two decades easily.
Decades for the tracks to come through?
She would know.
Well, we're working on the connector rail right now.
Right.
To get them in.
Right, but I mean, that's still a long way away too. So I mean, if this is a, and a project that's going to be built, I mean, you're looking for a very long time before you can connect into transit.
And I, speaking to the parking, I think one of the biggest concerns I have is, we don't typically hear we have too much parking on any project that we approve. It's usually the opposite. And that's holding to the two point five, right? So going down to a one point six, I think is what we were at on an average, that, just frankly, like, I would have a hard time approving anything with that, unless we had something solidified, and when we're talking decades or whatever it looks like for those type of projects, that's not something I would be comfortable approving, because we're still far out there.
So what about the idea of making that back end parking for now? Until the tracks is in?
If we have the parking, I think that changes that conversation about parking.
If that changes, that's great.
Okay, I think that's what we're willing to do.
Because another thing is, is that those people who are getting on tracks or any other commuter rail, they are generally white-collar people rather than blue-collar. Right?
Uh, it depends. I work downtown Salt Lake and want somewhere a little cheaper than downtown Salt Lake to live.
We just had training on that last week, John, where the guy from UDOT said, you're not going to... Every time they do tracks, it's no more than four percent of people that ride it.
That's right, that's true, and so...
So it's a help, but it's not a solution.
And a development like this will help alleviate, I mean, that's where some of your four percent's going to come from, is high-density housing like this.
Yep.
And I think that we want to encourage that in places. And this whole, this whole concept here is really good for what we've been talking about and what you guys have been talking about.
Gotcha.
TDRs, that's another thing. TDRs, I guess, are here. Have they been used yet anywhere?
Uh, they haven't been active on yet.
Right, but they're available. And do you guys have...
They're not available yet?
Well, I mean...
Close.
What I'm trying to say is, is that they're in concept.
Yeah.
And there are people who would be willing to sell TDRs, and there are people that are willing to buy them. So, you know, that's something that is also tied to this. Like you said, if TDRs come in and help you with that back part of that, that would be great. But do you envision how long it will be, how long it will take to do anything with the other acreages behind this part of the...
These are the only two phases considered at this point.
At this point.
Yeah, it would have to be post-TDR fully across the line that we would consider anything else on the back half. And it would have to be a parking reduction, which we'll probably come with tracks too. So we'll see at which point we revisit that, but...
Me personally, as I look at this and look at your, I spent some time looking at it last night, and I like the general plan, especially if you tell me that you are planning a project similar, it won't be exactly, I know that, but similar to what you have shown us tonight in your plan. You know, that looks great, and I think it'll be a great thing for the community. And we're always looking for that project that we can point other developers to and say, look at this product. It's a great product, it looks good, it functions well. You know, that's what we want, and that's what this appears to be. My biggest hurdle right now with that is just the parking, making sure that we've got enough. You know, we heard about some of the studies that you've done and stuff like that. But I really and truly, you know, just knowing our area, I mean, you hear about the H and Y kids, and so you know that cars are what we, cars and big four-wheel-drive trucks.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that's something that we just have to look at, because even if you're going to jump on tracks, you've got to have something to pull that trailer that has your wave runners on, or your four-wheeler on.
In order to get a preliminary plat approved, you would suggest the main difference being having the parking necessary.
That's my vote.
Okay.
I'm in my direction also. I agree with everything you guys have said on that. I think we do need, Brent, you said you'll have it for us, but we need to have your acreage clearly defined, shown, and so we can make sure that density works out, but...
Yeah.
Also, the minimum sizing, I don't know if I have, I don't know if I have too, I like it to be higher, but that's going to be your, that dictates how they're going to be rented out if there's not enough space for them. So I don't really have a big heartburn on that at all.
I, if that, just excuse me, if we do have, if we allow the lower square footage, we have to either, we have to either change the wording on that.
The code.
So that would have to come before we could approve it.
Would that have to be changed before, or would it just have to be a...
Square footage.
That'd be a variance.
As well as any thoughts on the garage percentage? We're currently at sixty, so if you hold it there, then...
I think that needs to be with the, I was lumping that in with the parking. I think that, in my opinion, yeah.
See, and I would, I guess I would vary a little bit. I think that the sizing of the houses, when we talked, I think it was seven, I don't remember the number, seven eighty?
There, seven thirty, and it was like...
Seven thirty for a single bedroom?
Yeah.
Like, we're right on that, we're treading on that side of, at least from our code, right, to a studio apartment at that point, or studio size. We're a little bit higher, like a, whatever, a hundred square feet. I would prefer that they're closer to what the code is already prescribing, and making sure that we're sticking to that, because I do think there is a market for that here. There's a lot of people looking for housing. If you go on the community news, there's a lot of people looking for a certain size. Usually, they're putting out a square footage, and it is a higher square footage because it's families that can't afford to get into a house or a townhome at this point. So they're looking for a product similar to what we're talking about. I love the amenities, I love what it looks like, but parking and size of the housing would be sticking points for me at this point.
Do you have anything to add?
Agree, agree.
I like that, but I could, I could hear both sides of that argument on the size of the units. Because I think that there is a market for smaller units. It's not what I would want, but there may be a market for that.
Especially in like a, I'm thinking, like in a professional plaza, there's...
Right.
But...
And so...
Your point's valid though, too.
And then that also depends on what the city wants to do. If we change that, you know, then everybody's going to go to that, regardless of the quality of their product. And of course, if quality goes down, that becomes an issue too.
Because the code does spell out the studio, right? It does spell out the one-bedroom, so I don't know if there's opportunity within that, right, within what already is written. I don't know.
You might want to check with staff and see what's possible with that. If staff and the city council would be amenable to looking at lowering the square footage that we have now.
We've been told that it would, yeah. So we've been told that this is acceptable. As Ryan said, it just costs more, it's a bigger space. If you need the bedrooms, to be efficient, get the cost down so you have a certain rent to still keep it this nice. I mean, it's all going to go down the bottom line, right?
For sure.
Financially speaking, so to have fifty extra square feet that aren't efficiently planned, it doesn't, then add that to the rent, it doesn't make a lot of sense, but...
And another thing that I will mention is, is that things are changing a bit in the way that we look at density and at the livable area. You know, I had a guy that came to my house, and at the end, he commented how nice it was, but he said that I was environmentally an idiot. Because I had velvet ceilings, and I had all of this wasted space, and I've got to heat it. And that's taking so much more energy than I really needed to live. And I guess if that's the way you want to look at it, I guess that's all right, but it's my choice. And so, you know, if we were to do something and have some kind of language that allows this, I guess it's the individual's choice to go take a look at what your product and say, you know what, seven hundred and thirty feet's enough.
Something that might add to that conversation too is seeing those floor plans and what they look like, right? Because you're talking about usable area and those type of things. Right now, we're just speculating in our minds what that looks like, so...
Yeah, we can show you a lot of...
Yeah, I think that could sway one way or the other, right, once those are seen.
When are you targeting coming before us with all your proposal?
As soon as possible. If we think we can be ready for next month, we'd like to do that.
What are the minimums we need to hit on the parking, so we know?
Right now, two point five, right? But we would have to, we'd have to look at that. And we were talking about it earlier today, is that we've been talking about parking for a long time. You came and did a presentation, what was that, in March? And we still haven't come to a consensus of what that looks like. Where we have been leaning is not on less parking, it's been on more parking on most projects. And so for me, right now, it would be two point five, but I do think that there is some validity to a project like this having less parking. I personally could, wouldn't be able to stomach anything under two by any means.
Yeah, one point six is low.
And one thing I need to point out, I know our time is short. You know, we do see this as a self-contained project, you know, on the parking side. But, you know, I understand where you're coming from, and I think that's really good feedback.
Todd, John, do you have anything different than that?
Nope.
It's a very attractive product. I mean, it really, it's great-looking.
Instead, just keep in mind, some of the reasons you can have those nicer amenities is making the floor plans more efficient, a little smaller, so you can put those costs in the common areas, right? So it all comes with...
And then I can't help but squeak in, if you go onto mountain.org's website, there's a transplan fifty, and it can show you all the phases of transit, bus rapid transit and roads, and tell you what two or three or four or five decades they are scheduled for.
Okay. Thank you.
Wouldn't stop you from still trying to get new GA to come down through?
No, yeah, we have, so we have a lot of negotiating power when they bring that connector through. We're using that, so yeah, we're planning one before that, so...
Thank you. All right, I believe we have one more.
Yes, unless there's anything else you guys would like to talk about after we're done?
We can go to that point. That plan for in the presentation.
Mr. Mitchell might beat me if I do.
Scold, but not scold.
We're going to step over to four hundred north and Spanish Fork Parkway. You can pull up an aerial if you need to or not. I apologize, I had a draft PDF that I shared with Mike, and then made some revisions to the actual Google Drive, excuse me, before the meeting. So four hundred north, just to orient ourselves, here's the railway. So four hundred north, just to orient ourselves, here's the railway that separates Mapleton City, uh, Spanish Fork City, four hundred north here on the south of the screen. To the left of us is Spanish Fork Parkway, Legacy Farms Townhomes just to the north. Um, project would be parceled out, just under fifteen acres, um, here. Let's jump back to the presentation, sorry. Uh, next slide. Um, this is an earlier revision, um, this kinda shows the overall layout of the project. Uh, grocery store, grocery store, excuse me, grocery right there, uh, earlier revision, or, sorry, passed my bedtime. Um, earlier versions had it more centrally located, this one, uh, has brought it out more to the corner.
We had like office complexes here.
Yes.
With the store.
Yep.
Here, right, okay.
Yeah, not much has changed on the residential side, um, in this slide, but if we jump to the next one, there's a slight change where these two units have been broken up. Next slide please. All right, this is the latest and greatest, I believe, yes. So this is roughly, uh, they've got it listed here, I think it was just over four and a half acres, four point six two acres. Far east proposed lot of the overall layout, uh, abutting the railroad tracks as you can see. This has it listed as potentially an R four project. I believe the application we have currently in the system was contemplating the urban village. Um, those are very important to consider because it's gonna play a role in potential density. And so, feedback we're looking for tonight, um, we've got more slides that kinda go through the product.
What density is this at right now?
This is just over twenty.
So it'd be our, that'd be our four zone, right?
That would exceed what the R four currently is, yeah.
Urban Village is twelve?
Urban Village usually caps at twelve, yeah, it's a range of five to twelve. Um, very different feel, um, is the intention, if we can zoom back out, Mike.
And Brandon, what is this currently zoned, the corner on Special Parkway for is commercial, is the whole thing commercial too?
This top strip is R three, right?
Uh, there's a top strip that was looked at with the Legacy Farms Townhomes, yes, yeah.
Okay.
That needs to be cleaned up.
Cause that's still R three?
Yeah, the whole discussion when this was approved was, uh, condensing the project, but keeping the same number of units. And then this was gonna be incorporated in, um, the commercial project, yeah.
Okay.
So if we jump back to the presentation, so that's one thing for your consideration, um, is just kinda look at, uh, density, product type, um, layout, um, just any feedback as far as, uh, the design. Um, the R four was kind of written, um, in reaction to proposals that did not have interior street systems. And so the city wanted to go away from parking lots, uh, being the way that you access the units and more of having the public streets, and so for instance, if this was replaced with a public street, similar to Ridgeline where you pulled it up or Vista View behind the small, uh, neighborhood Walmart, um, they've got a, a public street grid that the building's front onto. And then the, uh, other things that will, uh, let the applicant kinda share the details and speak to is, is the, uh, elevations. And so we're just looking for overall input, feedback, thoughts, uh, whether it's specific to the residential or if you have any feedback on, um, the overall area.
On this view here, from what I see, nothing fro- uh, from this, uh, is going on to fourth north, right?
If you go up a slide.
Everything is here, here.
So this, so once again, keep in mind the differences.
Yes, units here, but.
This, the access placements are still the same.
That was my question, is if this shows an entrance exit here, but on the other one it didn't show.
Oh, let's, let's see that. Yeah, you're correct.
Yeah, so this is the latest and greatest.
May have been a spacing issue.
Yeah. So there wouldn't be anything that goes, and I don't know whether that's good or bad, I'm just asking.
Oh, it's limiting in the sense that all your, uh, at this point a hundred units would be accessed from here or up here.
Which jumps out onto commercial all the way along there.
Yeah, there's kind of a office, office idea here, some retail pads here. And so you have a main, uh, this has been talked about possibly being a light, possibly a roundabout.
Where's that line with the project across the street?
Uh, that's a great question.
That looks a lot like the car wash.
So it'd be a four-way.
Um, that does.
That's, that's two ways with Joseph not being here.
Because this one shows this and as well as this.
Yeah, that's a great, great catch.
But on the latest and greatest, this is not there.
Yeah.
You've got that unit that sits here now.
Yep.
This is taking one of those and put it here.
Yep, okay. If we scroll down a slide. I'll just show you everything I've got on the slide deck and then that way.
This might be a question for the applicant, but do we know, what is the proposed phasing of the overall project?
That's a great question. We've got the.
Well, we, well, I wait till they come up, we can go over that one.
I have the next few slides, I've got the elevations, um, gonna scroll real fast, Mike.
Sorry, I was consulting my timer reminder, got it over here, so I.
Doesn't start until.
Doesn't start until I walk away, sorry.
I gotta set it, cause last time I forgot.
You did?
Last time you hit it and it went to zero.
I, sorry, what did you say?
Uh, just give them a quick peek and then we'll let the applicant kinda speak to them in detail. This is a nice rendering, um, showing the open space emphasizing that. Here we've got some, uh, elevations. Go ahead and zoom back out, we've got quite a few different angles, um, floor plans, we can zoom in on those in just a little bit, keep going down. This is showing our roof system. More elevations. Got some three-dimensional renderings. And then at the very end we've got, uh, this would be some of the, uh, look and feel for the retail. And then we've got, this is just an idea the applicant was throwing around for the north units. I believe that is it. Yep, so if you scroll up to the top, this is just the earlier one in case we needed that for reference. So go ahead and head up to the overall and we'll let the applicant take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the question? Uh, Corey Anderson.
Go ahead and start with hers.
Oh, that's really a good question, what was my question?
Uh, phasing.
Phasing.
Phasing, yeah, what is the phasing of this project?
First of all, this, um, since we submitted this, there's been a U, a meeting with UDOT and they didn't like that. So, that was because of, of distance between, so we, they asked us to get rid of that. That's why that's no longer there on it, on the other slides. Phasing would be the, our intent right now is, um, we, in, are in the, we're in talks with grocery store, um, that is moving ahead with studies and financing and that kinda stuff. We don't have any LOIs yet, cause we don't really have a project approved, so we can't really, um, go too far down there. But we have been in discussions with her about, um, a grocery store that she would like to get going as soon as we can. These ones, our idea is just to sell the pads, um, that, so I, I don't really have a time on, on when that. And then on the residential, we would go in and, and start building the residential immediately.
So these would be depend on, these, you're selling to a future build, somebody that'll do a build out of them?
Yes, and we're, and we're in talks with, with tenants and owners right now, but again.
But this one, you are in conversation with a grocery store?
Yeah, we're in to- we're in talks with people on, on everything, yeah.
This guy, this you'll be keeping though?
Yes, and.
Since you control, that'll probably be the first one that would go out and it'd go out.
Correct, and what we would do when we, when we do this, would we improve fourth north and the parkway, put this entrance in, put this in there. We'd probably do, run the utilities through here with, uh, the, a, a drive that goes through there, so they can access everything. And then, so the pads would be available to start building. We are designing, in the works of designing, one, maybe two of those out front, talking to tenants that may want to occupy those, um, restaurants and things that could go in there. That was just something our engineer threw in there. I think as soon as anybody who owns a car wash drives through Spanish Fork, they realize there's a lot and.
We got plenty.
Joseph can find a spot for another.
So, this, this was kinda nixed by UDOT.
Correct.
I guess because it's too close to the railroad crossing.
Exactly.
What about this one?
Uh, they're okay with that one.
They're okay with that one even though this one was a major intersection?
Yep.
Okay.
My assumption is that far left one's just a right in, right out.
Yeah, that's a right in, right out.
Yes.
And this one was because of, there's an access, there's something that sits up at back here, and I'm not sure exactly what it is. Nobody in the city knows, but I guess there's an access road to that.
Is that a rail thing or something?
I think it, yeah, I think it's a railroad facility, isn't it, the, uh, one of those silver buildings? I think it's for signaling and stuff on the trains, but I don't know.
So lots of traffic.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
One pickup a month.
That was my comment.
Yeah. So.
So yeah, the, the feedback, I think from the sounds of it, the urban village is a kind of a newer zone that's never really been used.
It's been there for a while, but nobody.
Old and old, it's never really been used.
Yeah, and so, the, before we start, my architect is here, so feedback on, on the design of the, on the residential would be, would be good. Before we turn him loose on, on, on you and those buildings. These that we, that we do, uh, have lay, layout here, um, they are a two-bedroom, one-bath, nine hundred square feet. And, uh, I, the difference between us and the, the previous applicant is we sell these, these are condo, we sell them to, uh, users. We don't keep them as rentals, uh, it's a, it's a condoed project that we sell off to, to individual families and, and, um, it's not something we keep as a rental and try and get people in there to rent them, they come in there and there's their private ownership.
So who will maintain the open areas and?
So there's an HOA that is set up, excuse me, an HOA that is set up to maintain all that. Including, um, parking, and I agree with him that two point five is, we built seven hundred of these throughout, uh, Utah County and down in St. George. And we've gone down in Orem, we've, our parking requirements down in there have been two. Um, in Provo we have one at two. Two point five is a lot, uh, of parking for, and for our product. Um, I mean, I can only speak with us, because what we do, uh, we limit the amount of adults, uh, and it's, it's recorded, you can, in our, our rules and regs, there's only two adults per unit, um, no more than two vehicles are allowed, there's parking passes, there's an onsite manager that, uh, that hands out these parking passes. Because parking can be an issue, but you drive through all the projects that we have and there is, uh, so many vacant spaces at night. Um, and so what we have found is, is, is two is, is plenty. Uh, we have one project in Orem that was one point seven and they've been fine. We did, uh, we had the issue, our parking passes over there because the neighbors were coming into our units and parking over there because of the two adults per, um, per unit. Um, and what we have found on these, um, is our typical, the average age is about twenty-four. And they're young married couples that are getting a start in life, that are coming in and buying it. There was a lady, uh, that was in my office today that thought that she could only go out and rent something, it's like, no, you, you can buy these. We go get these FHA approved, uh, they can come in with five percent down and they can buy these and own these and, and get that start in life. That's kind of our, our little niche that we, we like to, we like to do is give these, these kids starting, uh, in their, in their life, the place that they can actually own.
I have another question, if we can go up to the elevations. Is this your only option?
Well, that's why I'm here.
As far as the looks and, uh, uh, I suppose that the back sides of most, well, the back sides along the railroad tracks will only be seen from that side. Uh, but, uh, some of those that are in the center will be visible from the other, I guess from the other backside, I don't know.
The backside, that's gonna be, there's gonna be a four-story wall as you're coming down fourth north from Mapleton.
So see, that, that's what I'm getting at, is that you've got a, almost a, yeah, a four-story wall. And everything's pretty blocky with not much variation and, uh, I wish that there was some way to, you know, you have, since the first time you came to talk to us, you've changed this a little bit to try and hide the staircases somewhat, there's a staircase here, is there?
I think we said we didn't like the open staircase and the open walkways to the, to the units. Was the direction we gave last time, wasn't that one of our comments?
I haven't been here.
That was when we talked to Dave.
Was that, you're talking to Dave?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Maybe that was what it was. This is the one just, forget University Parkway.
Yeah, that's ours.
And I understand that this, this might be something, it's a personal, a personal preference on my part. But, uh, like we were talking to the other applicant about having a product that really stands out and you say, you know, this, this is what we're shooting for and this is the, this is the style of, uh, what's style? That's not the right word. This is what we're looking for in attracting, uh, business, not just people, but business and development and other stuff, the Spanish Fork, you know, we like to see things that are a little bit different, things that, uh, may not be how things have looked for sixty years, things like that. But, as I, it, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering, if you're married to this style, I know that this is what you've been building.
Yeah.
You know, they're all over, so my question is, maybe we ought to build something different.
Well, and, and the, I'm open for suggestions, absolutely, I mean, we want a beautiful product, we want something that's gonna last, there's no doubt about it. That being said, you know, it's, we, we like, we, we like this layout, it works for us, um, I know, uh, we think they're nice looking, but.
It's the same layout as the one in Orem, just different, it's a flat roof instead of a pitched.
This is a more modern feel that we've.
No doubt.
And my architect is here, so please rattle off some ideas, we're willing to.
Well, we're gonna have him come up and maybe.
Don't we, don't we have a balcony count that we're gonna present, we'd require on?
Yeah, with our, our four.
I think that was one of the changes that we rattled a couple of months ago to the R four.
Yeah, and this, these don't show any, right, that, I can't really see that back elevation's down a little, but there's nothing there, is there? I don't think so. So that's one thing that would.
It's me, they look very institutional, maybe I'll use that term.
I don't, yeah.
You know, I, uh, is that one of your products right there?
No, this is one we looked at when we did talk to Dave.
Right.
Right.
It has some different reliefs to the front and, you know, the back, I don't know, the, for the back units that are gonna be facing north, fourth, uh, excuse me, facing south to fourth north, you know, I'd like to have something other than what we're seeing of the backside of these now. I mean, there's no difference in the, you know, I mean, windows stacked on top of each other, the exact same size, uh, same shape, no variance. I know that that's, this is a style type thing that I'm talking about?
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a style, um, and it's also, you know, price is a, if, a big deal with, you know, doing this type of stuff. Again, if it, it's, if it's a somewhat cost-effective and, and can, and bring and beautify our buildings, then absolutely we'd, we'd be willing to do that.
I'm well aware that every corner costs more money, and I'm well aware that, uh, sometimes it may or may not be more expensive to build a deck. But we have none of that in your product. You know, we don't have, we don't have much in that regard, so.
Madera was, came, started that process very. Madera was, came, started that process very similar. We required them. They made quite a few changes and it seemed to pencil for them just fine because they're moving ahead of that project.
Which project was that?
Madera.
Madera.
On Arrowhead.
By across from Revere.
Yeah, by Revere.
By across from, they're not, they're not building yet. They've been approved. And, uh, they look a lot more like the product on the right there.
I think one thing is proximity, right? Or statement pieces, it's coming into, from Mapleton into Spanish Fork, especially if we're having a grocery store there. Or whatever those businesses are, we're gonna be pulling people in from Mapleton, making something that's, I don't know, a statement piece for, for that. It sets apart that project. And I think that it'll help both from the aesthetic side of it, but also just like what the look and feel is.
So what I'm hearing is you're not necessarily opposed to the fronts of that, but just something to beautify, change up the backs of that, so it's not a wall.
I'd like to see something different in the front as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not a fan of.
And I'll tell you why, I'll tell you why. The product that you see just north of you guys.
Just north.
You know, just north of your property, all of the multi-unit dwellings that are there now, all of these. They're not ugly, but they're the same.
Yeah.
They are the frickin' same, all the way through. And, you know, uh, it's okay. See, those look pretty good. They've got a lot of relief, front and back and things like that. They look pretty good. And that's what your property is going to be looking at. At least the grocery store, that's what the grocery store is gonna be looking at. And so, you know, it's nice to have something a little bit different, but you go there for a quarter of a mile and it all looks, it looks just like that. And it's kind of nice, I don't know, you know, I guess, I guess it's just me and again, if it's a personal thing, it's a personal thing and, and I'm only one guy. But I don't, I don't hate these at all. It's just that, take a look, you know, front and back. You know, you just, just stamp them out. And, uh, you've got a fair amount of units there.
Actual items.
It'd be, it'd be kind of nice to see something that, you know, yours is not this. And that's refreshing. And I'm not against the four stories. I'm not against the higher density. I would just like to see some more, uh, character.
I also think.
I mean, I'm using your character.
It reminds me of student housing.
It looks a lot like something I'd like to build close to BYU housing.
We were talking about the front, right? This, I, we've had a product, Madera is a good example of that and I'm sure the city could share with you a little bit where we've come with theirs. But they started a little bit similar with the stairs, kind of on the edges, and eventually kind of moved to where stairs were a little bit tucked away in the middle. Kind of going out to the units and different things like that, just to make it so it doesn't feel so apartment-esque, I guess college-esque, I don't know what the right word is there. The other thing is, um, in the layout, everything is parking, right? You walk out your front door, it's parking, it's all parking. And, and we talked about maybe some of the parking numbers. Um, there's a reason why the R four zoning was kind of illustrated the way it is on public streets. To try to get more of that, uh, that feel of grass or some type of landscaping in front of the buildings instead of just parking fill. Because they feel different. Um, I don't know if you've been over by the neighborhood Walmart, there's a, there's a, uh, some units going behind there. That fills.
Stacked.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Just, yeah, just directly west of the small mart or neighborhood Walmart. That just gives it a different, different feel. And I think they've even changed since then a little bit, right?
That's what Madera is.
And the balcony requirement like, um.
Yeah, that, I, I think some balconies would be really nice. It's such a beautiful area and there's views and I imagine some, if you're gonna buy a, a unit, you'd like to sit out on a balcony.
I think we require it. It's part, it's, it's written in there. Um, I guess we're looking for our opinions. Um, so we've, I've addressed the exterior. I'm not a fan of the exterior that you have right now. I'd like to see some of the changes that fellow commissioners have talked about. I do have a bit of a concern with the density if we're asking for an R four, but we're above an R four. Um, so I, I am concerned about that. I think I'd, uh, would wanna see that comply.
I haven't even looked. What are we over?
Um, we're at, did you say we're over twenty?
Yeah, you're closer to twenty-one and a half.
Yeah. And then, um, I, I would like to walk through the unit layouts. If, I don't know if you wanna do that, if your architect would do that. I do have a question for you before we do that though, with parking, and I guess this is for my, for you, but also for my fellow commissioners. You have some businesses, I know you haven't, don't have tenants in them yet, that'll be to the west of there. Is there any like cross parking easement where we could, the businesses will be closed at five, people are coming back at five. Will your, would tenants be able to park there at night?
This whole project is gonna have a cross easement for parking. But again, when our, with our FHA standards, we have to be able to meet certain criteria. Now, as far as the city standard goes, yeah, there's gonna be a cross easement for everything in here, um, but it would have to stand alone.
Right.
And because Lot One is going to be its own project.
Right.
Because of the FHA and so, but yes, there, there will be cross parking and I think that'll definitely.
Could we look at the unit layouts? I would, I'd be interested to see those. You said most of them were two-bedroom?
All of them are two-bedroom.
All of them are two-bedroom?
Two-bed, one-bath.
All, all of them are that way? Is that just the, is that the market niche you're going after? Or you find that's the best selling type or?
Again, we've found that that, this is the thing that people need and want and kind of what he was, uh, referring to earlier. It's just, it's a, it works for the, for the, the, the end user that we, that is looking to buy our units.
Okay.
Um, there's very little small, there's very few small children. Uh, there's nobody over eight in any of our projects. Uh, they come in there, they have one kid, then they move on. They'll sell it and move on. Uh, that's why we don't put a ton of amenities in there. We definitely don't do pools, uh, because we want, because they are buying these, we want the HOA, the, the, uh, F, the HOA fees to be very manageable. Um, like our project in Springville that we're finishing up, it's a hundred bucks a month, you know, and that maintains the, the insurance, the landscaping, the snow removal. Their water, um, so.
Where at, in Springville?
Um, right on six hundred South and Main, just a street from Four South is Walgreens. There's an old school, the old school that was torn down right there.
All those ones, okay, yep.
That's, that's ours. And, uh, yeah, so that, we've, we haven't changed, we've, we've grown them a little bit from our first project, uh, to, up to nine hundred square feet. And, uh, that's where we found that, you know, we've, it, it works for them.
Good.
They get rent there or they get sold soon, don't they?
Yes, they do.
Uh, getting back to, you know, I, I'm sure that you're very comfortable with this style because you built a lot of them.
Well, the style's changed over different projects. If you look at every city, the materials change, the styles change. So style's gonna change with. Oh, sorry, sorry.
State your name.
Were you referring to the unit layout style or the building exterior? Both?
Shane Williams with W two Design. So the building layout was based off of, they've built this seven hundred times. They know how to build it. They've gotten the cost down. Waste is almost a zero. They figured out the building. The exterior can change and not affect that to a certain point. Once you get to that certain point, then you start adding costs. You remove him from his target client. So those are all things to weigh in. And, and do you want every unit available in your city to a high-end client? Or do you wanna provide that diversity to the diverse clients, the diverse citizens that you have in your communities? That's something you need to think about as well.
And we do often.
Yeah, and so.
Might not apply to this project, but we, as we look over everything we have, we, we definitely.
This is a different demographic than the previous app, applicant and it's gonna have different amenities, different looks, just different quality to it. What we are not gonna do is vinyl siding, but.
Good answer, good answer.
The materials and colors of course are up, up to, up to, this is just, uh, a conceptual rendering that we've done based off of an initial comment that they don't want it to look like his previous projects. And so there was a comment on enclosed staircases or a central staircase. I personally have never had a project where somebody's tried to limit the ways out of an apartment building, especially a four-story. So the end caps provide better egress out. Enclosed staircases are where most, most of your crime, most of your, your feedie, all those kind of things happen. So enclosing those is not always the best idea. And then, um, the exposed railing across the front, that could be a pony wall. It could be railing. It could be a lot of different things if your concern is that apartment building look or student housing look with exposed doors. But you're also gonna add costs. Once you close that up, you gotta sprinkle it. You've got it, there's certain things you have to do. Um, once you start closing things in, you've gotta condition it. So you're adding costs to stuff like that as well.
In the winter, how do you make those, um, deviations without being safe or, um, not setting being cold, right? It's going to be cold.
Ice, ice is always an issue, blowing snow, so.
You box up with snow on your boots and then it freezes because those are cold, right? Because you have the wind that blows.
Yeah, that could always be an issue. Um, where we've eliminated the railing and, and putting the walls and set around it, um, that reduces that. But maintenance on properties and ice is, is always gonna be an issue when you have exposed, um, egress and exposed stairs, yeah.
I've never fallen down when I lived in the apartment.
So how do you feel about relief as far as the fronts and rears, uh, balconies, things like that? How do you feel about that?
Backsides of apartments are always a problem. I mean, the backside, you look at most houses, most apartments, the backside is the forgotten side. Um, it's also a side for us to reduce the cost of building. So I agree with facing a street or something like that, beautifying that facade. But all of these units except for one are either facing each other or a railroad. And so the one that we're asked to put out towards the street, um, obviously something different could be done to that. But then you start to lose your economies of scale of building, repeating, um, those kind of things. So it's all stuff to think about, obviously.
Well, to me, uh, what was said before about, uh, I, I, I call it institutionalized because, you know, I went to BYU, spent quite a bit of time in Provo and.
Yeah.
You know, uh, when you're looking, you know, the kids go there and, you know, they go up and down the street and the, the way that they pick which apartment they wanna live in is by what looks the nicest. And there's one over there that's been built kind of close to campus that I swear looks like a prison. You know, and yeah, I mean, four walls and what you got in here is the fastest, quickest, cheapest thing you can do. And then you can rent them for, for less and I understand that.
Is it, um, on the backside of that, would it, would it be just changing, um, building material, just to give it something that's gonna break that up?
Part of it.
I think there's the new requirement.
What would it do if you had, uh, you got, uh, flag teams across there? What would it do if two to three of those had a, had a deck? And not a big deck, a small deck that could be incorporated into it. And of course, if you buy one with a deck, you'll pay a little bit more. Some will choose not. You know, one of the issues we had in here not too long ago was a, they were thinking about a four-story unit. And I made the comment about, I'm not walking up four stories. Well, you're not selling it to me. So what difference does it make? However, uh, they said that the fourth, the fourth story is the first one to sell, but it's the first one to be resold. And if you, if you pack your kid in two bags of groceries up four stories, you're saying it's time to move there. So, you know, everything has, has its good and bad sides to it. And I don't have any objections to the floor plans. I think that they're, it's, it's very workable and everything like that. But I, I, I just would like to see something, uh, something to break up that, uh,
The elevation.
facade.
Yeah, go to the renderings.
You know, this, my wife and I like to walk, you know, occasionally when we're going somewhere, we'll take the old road, take the road through the towns and take a look at the different products that there are. And what we see that's attractive are the ones that are broken up with decks and with different kinds of fronts and colors. You know, stuff like that, you know, it's a big deal.
So we have different colors, different materials, um.
Is this one of your product, products as well?
This is.
This is the same thing. That's why I wanna go to the renderings because the elevations aren't doing it justice. It, it's, and, and, and some of these will have carports because they're, I mean, some of them will be parking spaces, some will be garages because of the percentages that are required for garages. So that'll break up the facade a little bit as well. This is the current look. Everything's going more modern and people absolutely love it or they hate it. There's no in-between. And when you say it's institutional, it's modern. Like modernism is just, uh, an aesthetic that's hitting really hard right now. And it'll go away and something else will come back and that's what creates a nice diverse look in your community. We work in a lot of communities where they acquire red brick everywhere because they want a colonial look, but they require the exact same red brick. If you go to Boston, there's very few buildings that look exactly like each other, but that's what they're trying to get. It's that diversity and that difference in looks that actually creates a patchwork of a good-looking community. So this is just a different look and it was based off of comments that other buildings that these guys have done, were not something that you liked.
That is much more palatable to me.
I kept on looking at those renderings, I'm like, please go to the other drawing. So.
Do you think that's the, the, as Jesse said, the statement coming in from Salem, does that match the area? Is that?
Mapleton?
Mapleton?
Uh, yeah, you know, that's, and, and I don't mean that, yes, yes.
Is there a back rendering of that?
Is there a back rendering of these?
Scroll down.
Rarely, rarely.
If you scroll down. There might not be.
No, scroll up.
No, there aren't any other, there's no. That's your elevation.
On the back.
Yeah.
But even the colors there help, but, you know, I'm just, I'm just thinking that, uh, on each floor. We've had this discussion before in Spanish Fork about, uh, about different styles and specifically about, uh, having some kind of, uh, not a very big area, but something that is accessible through a sliding glass door or something. And you see those in quite a few places now where they use that as something isn't attractive to. And if you're, if you've only got a few people in this, you don't need a deck the size that I have off of my house. Put a small deck where you could go out and put a small smoker or a, or a barbecue out there, just, because you don't have a lot of open space. You don't have a lot of place to, uh, do that. When you're up three or four stories, it's kind of a pain.
That is one of the things that we don't like about offices is there are gonna be barbecues. There's gonna be bikes. There's gonna be laundry.
I disagree one hundred percent. And I'll tell you why. As you, as you come down to Spanish Fork again, I don't know where you live, come past through Provo and I went around through Springville. And there are five to six apartment complexes now that have that. We were told by a builder that he doesn't like them because they become junk places. People throw their garbage bags out there. People put their bikes out there. There's an occasional bike or something out there. There's an occasional barbecue grill. But I can tell you, they are not as bad as it, as they, as it's usually painted. And most of those are used. They've got a couple of chairs. It's usually two chairs out there and a barbecue. And, uh, you know, I haven't seen anything that's newer that has been, eh, every now and then you see a BYU or a Utah flag draped over it or something, you know, on a game day or something. But if you're gonna have that, you've already told us that you're going to have a manager onsite, right? You know, it's awfully easy to say, I'm sorry ma'am, but, uh, you've got three bags of garbage out there. You gotta take care of them. Or whatever it might be. I just disagree.
I'm not opposed to doing exactly what you're asking to do. I'm just.
Well, I, I just, I just.
It's one of the fears that we have in putting something back there, that it would be a garbage essential.
It, well, it's a valid concern, but I don't know that it's proven.
Yeah, it depends on how it's managed, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's right. I believe somebody stated that there's new zone, new requirement in the zoning that requires a certain percentage anyway.
I don't remember.
That's like a new suggestion regardless.
Well, there's a, a number of things. And so, for instance, with the last group we just talked about, there's a square feet. We're currently at ten eighty. We want a ten or a thousand. Now we're partnering down to nine hundred. And so what staff would like to hear is this location, is this what you're comfortable with? Because then we can start saying, okay, here's the changes to code that you need to consider. For instance, we're currently twelve acres minimum for a project. We've got less than five dedicated to this. Is this an area that you wanna see resold to R four? Um, is this the look and feel? But then we'd obviously have to see changes to the design of the street network and things like that, I think. So, balconies are currently written in code, and that was a recent addition.
Yeah.
Are we giving credit for the square footage of decks?
That counts towards ten eighty, yeah.
Yep.
If it's usable. So if you remember where the discussion said one and a half foot open on, it's not counted.
That's right.
It's something you can step out on.
And that's what spawned that discussion, is that we, you know, they're, they, they're going to build just a sliding glass door and a one and a half foot balcony.
What is the square footage of these units?
That's just. Nine hundred, is that right? Nine hundred?
Hmm, okay.
So Brandon made a good point, and I'm curious what the rest of the commission thinks, like, is this the right product? Is this the right density for that area? I'm struggling with that a little bit.
That was my comment, I ha- I do have a problem with the density. So that's, I mean, if I'm adding my opinion, I, I need to be clear with that, I, I, I'm not sure I support that density here. And then I had the concerns about books, I was not aware of the, we're that far under the square footage. So I think, I think there's some work that needs to be done on that. I mean, I'm not here to, uh, I'm just here to give my opinion tonight, I don't know, I think those would be my obstacles in, in furthering a project like this, and hopefully I can take that into their consideration there.
So, are, are, are you talking about the total density here? Because I think you're only two over on the entire project.
No, two over to be an R four.
Yes, to be an R four.
So R four bring a whole bunch of different things, like open space and amenities with that, which is currently not in there.
Yes, that's true.
And I think that's the, that's the confusing, confusing part about this project, is I'm not sure what zone we're actually in.
You're a C two commercial.
Well, I know, we're rezoning it to the urban village.
So that would be twelve units to the acre.
But you'd also have to meet the design criteria and layout of the urban village, which this probably is not. And so, your civil then put on the plans, we're requesting an R four, which would then.
Well, yeah.
Let us look up to twenty, but that, that's, that's a whole location discussion. Is this the, you know, if this is the product they like, is this the right location?
Yeah, 'cause R four would also have to front two public roads, uh, some different things like that, which would be, yeah.
Most of that were based off of projects where we were trying to hit a goal of two hundred units to sustain amenities that are required.
Yeah. So I think some of the similar concerns for me, uh, the back elevation, I think is important just because of the location. I know that we were talking about railroad tracks, but those railroad tracks are also facing a lot of people who are gonna be driving that road. Four hundred north is a busy road, at least that's what it is in Spanish Fork, I have no idea what it is in Mapleton. But there's a lot of people coming down that road, especially if we're building, uh, a, a grocery store, wow, I can't speak. Um, the density, I think we have to have that discussion, we have to figure out what really works there. If it's urban village, I really like the idea of, of someone coming in and making something urban village, um, if it works. Um, which it definitely changes the product, though, right? It's not, it's not this, 'cause twelve units to the acre is a lot less than what we're currently seeing. Um, I love the idea of some cross easement and some utilizing those things and what you're trying to do. But I do think there's some big hurdles there that we have to kind of figure out which direction we're going, right? 'Cause I think that if we go R four, we have to have a way different conversation about amenities, street park, our streets, that kind of stuff. If we want urban village, we have to kind of recreate the plan. I don't know if you have anything.
Nope.
Michelle?
No, that summed it up.
I think the, uh, the, the, the big part that, that, um, weighs heavy on this project is, is what the density looks for us on this.
Right.
You know, when we, when we first, we bought the first half, the eleven acres, we've actually purchased that. And then we came back, we just have the other one under contract, assuming we get a project approved.
Right.
And, and with that grocery store and, and without that, that, that's the, so there's some financial things that we have to look through as well, if we don't get a density that helps us.
Right.
Um, then it might squash that whole thing, because we don't have the money to pay that back three acres to bring in that grocery store. 'Cause that grocery store is a, you know, she's a big, a big player in this that we make zero money on.
Right.
That hopefully the city is going to benefit from, and that we can benefit from having some density as well.
I do think there's a, there is a huge opportunity there with the urban, urban village, though, that a lot of developers haven't taken advantage of. And if you have a grocer that's kind of on that, on that line, there is an opportunity to maybe create something different that maybe becomes, um, beneficial.
So.
So I think the first step, at least, as I hear it, and obviously it's simplistic, 'cause I'm not a contractor, I don't know all that fun stuff. But it's really deciding which zone to pursue, and then working with staff on what does that look like.
You know, I, I don't mind every, other than the density, I mean, I can come, I, we could definitely come down a little bit, but to twelve, twelve to the acre.
Right.
That will cancel.
So that's where we'd have to kind of work, again, I trust staff, 'cause they're gonna know the ins and outs of that better, but there, we really have to kind of figure out where that's at first, before we can really do anything else.
But as far as the building, I mean, we'll.
Yeah.
We'll do some making, making it look a lot more, um, inviting and something that's a staple to that road. We can do that, that's easy. Um, the other ones, that might be a struggle, so. All right, anything else?
Anything? Any questions for us?
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anything else, Brandon, or Mr. Snyder?
Just a reminder, next Tuesday, our joint funding commission city council meeting, many topics of discussion. We'd love your involvement and attendance.
What time is that at?
I believe five thirty.
Is Joseph gonna be there?
Uh, yes.
He's back from his cruise.
Well, I can't speak for Joseph.
You think so?
I'm not aware of anybody that's said they can't be there.
Gotcha.
Um, and we can definitely email out, I know Dave's been trying to work on getting an agenda to you. Uh, that's something that our administration is working on finalizing.
Okay.
Um, I've seen different drafts where they have each individual item, like TDRs, uh, you know, p- parking, landscaping listed out, and then other graphs where it just says land use items to be addressed, but.
Would it be, would it be useful to have us with the city council? I really like the idea of having us both there to get the temperature of what they're feeling about, different things. Uh, urban village is one of them. You know, I think that we need to, you know, as we were talking here, twelve inches to the acre is very high density. You know, could it go higher? Would there be some, I think.
I said all depends on your.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with, I'm not familiar with enough urban village settings to know whether that's the right number, or whether there's a possibility of having more. Uh, I don't know, and that, and so I'm asking the mission, I'd like to ask the same.
It's a high, it's a high density. I don't, I mean, it's not our job to make a dense, or make a project pencil for every developer that comes in. And every developer's gonna ask for higher and higher density. We gotta, we gotta look at what works for our community and, and the surrounding area. I think an, an R four, or actually in this case, a higher than R four for that area, doesn't, doesn't fit that area, in my opinion.
I tend to agree, because I, uh, I didn't see, foresee this many units being built on this property. You know, like I said, I knew the original owners, I know the original owners of it. And, you know, I don't know that they had much of an idea of building high density there at all.
Mm-hmm, but these guys do.
A long time ago.
These guys do, and, and, and another, it may or may not work, what they had to pay for the land, I don't know. But that's not our job to determine, we're just determining what works out best for Spanish Fork.
And that is why I would like to have that discussion, to see exactly. 'Cause I'm, I don't feel comfortable at all with telling somebody yes or no, that's going to fit into this or that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, right now, you look, we've got to look, I agree with you. That you look at what the rules are and say, that does not work for this particular area.
Especially when you see this, you got the townhomes, which I actually like, to develop, aside of them. And then you have the, the single-family development to the south.
Yes. It's pretty nice.
Hard to, hard to, for me to sandwich that in there.
Yeah.
Um, his comments on the grocery store does, I mean, that is, that is a big plus, and I, I, I mean, that's, I can see some, uh, give and take there to help get that into that area, I just don't know if that.
Higher than R four?
Yeah, I just.
Yeah. Doesn't make sense. I think one of the things.
I think that's a big area of discussion that we need to explore.
I think we already talked about it earlier, is making sure we're talking about parking, too, with the city council, 'cause that's obviously something that, a sticking point that we're always going to talk about, and even after we figure out what we're gonna do.
A little bit of trouble over that.
But we need to, yeah, Shane will get us.
Yeah, because we shouldn't be making those kinds of decisions.
Yeah. With that, I, I think we can adjourn.
I'll send comments on that once you've turned off three-quarter.
So, someone making a motion to adjourn?
Second.
There was a, you got a motion, you gotta make a second.
Oh, you want a motion?
Yeah, you gotta make the motion.
Oh, I move that we adjourn.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.